Yeah, we're all.
Good evening and welcome to the December 13th meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We're glad to have those of you that are with us tonight and we're glad to have those that are watching on TV at home. It's always good to have the public involved. First order of business, we're going to ask the principals Natalie Hardeman from Reeves Rogers and also Sonia Cox from Kason Lane. If they will please come forward and introduce our pledges tonight. We'll pledge and then we'll follow that with our moment of silence. Ladies?
All right, tonight we have Aiden Promised, one of Aiden. He's a third grade student at Reeves Rogers and his teacher is Ms. Rowe.
And from Kason Lane, we have Monroe Johnson. She is a second grade student at Kason Lane in Ms. Pierce's class. And we also have Aubrey Maury. She is a third grade student at Kason Lane in Ms. Smith's class.
Now let us stand for the pledge followed by the moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now our moment of silence. All right, board members, you have seen a copy of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right, communications, Ms. Taylor?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I have lots of thanks on my communications tonight, so it fits the atmosphere tonight. So first of all, we have to say thank you to Instruments for Education. They donated 40 electric guitars and amps to the students at Bradley Academy. The art teacher, Abby Miller, actually coordinated this project and these were guitars and amps that the students got to take home with them. They are theirs to keep. They were just adorable, real guitar. So hopefully, they will be able to really enjoy those and we appreciate Ms. Abby for doing that. Also, thank you to Tracy Lawrence Mission Possible Thanksgiving. They did do a meal donation for us this year. They partnered with Murfreesboro City Schools to supply 100 complete meals to our families who had that need on Thanksgiving. In addition, Jordan Ferguson with Hands Worldwide and John Jones Realty provided 200 hot meals. They were distributed also on that Thanksgiving week to our families. Most of these families were living in some places that needed just some extra help for the holidays. So we appreciate both of those partners coming together and helping us to provide warm meals for our families. North Boulevard Youth Group every year hosts our students. They do it three different nights. This year, over 350 of our students went to their holiday party. It included getting a new coat, new mittens, new hat, also a meal. And then they got to go shopping at the church, so everybody got to go home with a big ol' bag of presents. That was provided by that youth group, so we appreciate them. North Boulevard's Band of Brothers also has been doing this for years. They hosted a group of our children on a shopping spree. So they went to Walmart and just went down that list and bought lots and lots of gifts. That was coordinated through our social workers, our counselors, and our outreach department. Kudos to Kason Lane. I think they did leave, but kudos to Kason Lane. They actually, if you were at the Christmas tree lighting two weeks ago, you would have heard their performance. They did a fabulous job. So congratulations, Ms. Cox. It sounded wonderful and we love having our kids on display. Anytime they can get out and perform, it's just a good thing to do. So we appreciate that. Lastly, Discovery School applications are open and they are due on January 6th. So Discovery School's already had a couple of open houses and has really been working with families to let them know about them, help them with the application process. But if there is a family that's wanting to know more about Discovery School, they can go to the Discovery School website. Applications are online this year and I am sure that the folks at Discovery would be able to help them with any questions they may have. So once again, that deadline is Friday, January 6th. That slips up on us a little bit because of the holidays, but we don't want any family to miss out. Those are your communications, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. It's great to have community partners.
Absolutely.
Amen.
They mean so much to our students and our faculty and our employees and we are certainly humbled and thank them. All right, Dr. Duke, best of MCS students.
Good evening again, board. We are so excited tonight to present our best of MCS recognition this month to two of our students in MCS for a really honorable accomplishment and demonstration of excellence that they have achieved. Faith Alzate and Maya Hernandez are both fifth graders who attend John Pittard Elementary. Faith and Maya are students of Dr. Christy Mall and they were state finalists for the TSIN Computer Science Mini Design Challenge. As finalists, they were invited to go to Nashville to present their project at the Computer Science Momentum Expedition last week. And I would like to invite their teacher, Dr. Mall, and Faith and Maya up to introduce the girls and to tell us more about their amazing project.
Hi, it's wonderful to see you. I am so proud of these two girls because we just represented John Pittard at the TSIN Mini. They had a conference that occurred last week. These girls were finalists in the micro-science challenge. It was a computer science-based challenge in which they had to create something that used computer science but would make the well-being of others more viable. Out of all the schools that were represented, Rocky Fork and John Pittard were the only middle Tennessee schools. Everyone else was from Memphis, Chattanooga, Linden. And we had a lot of people that were asking all about our school system because they were so impressed. So these wonderful girls came up with an amazing invention and I'm going to let them tell you a little bit about that.
So we created a helmet that detects football players whenever they get a tackle or something. It detects if...
It detects how hard the hit is. Some concussions can come from the force that they hit the floor and our helmets can collect all the data from the hit or how hard it happened. And all the data that they get goes to the coaches and the nurses to know if it is a concussion or if it's just a serious hit that they need to sit out for the game and that they can't play for the rest of the game or if they don't need to play for the rest of the season. Some concussions can lead to CTE where you can lose your memory and stuff. And when you lose your memory, you forget who you are, your name, and sometimes you can forget where you live. And if you forget where you live, you can get lost and that isn't good. And it can happen to all ages and any sports, even karate. So these sensors can go in like their little bands that they have around their head. And for like in soccer, they also get hit if they have like a little band that goes around their head, we can put the sensors in there.
What was really great about this project is not only were they finalists, but the award ceremony, which presented them with medals, was at Titan Stadium. So that was right in a place where that invention fit in perfectly and they presented their invention to STEM leaders and business people and government officials from all over the state.
Wow, that's incredible.
Impressive.
Ladies, before you sit down, I think that's a wonderful thing that you've done because we all know if we watch any kind of football games, I don't care whether they're professional or they're junior pro, students, players get the head hits. Was there anybody there that really honed in on it and we looking perhaps of something that can come about in the future?
While they were presenting, we actually had her, both parents were there. And we had several people come and approach us about that invention, wanting to know more information. And I have now started getting emails from different groups that are asking questions and wanting to not only see how they came up with their invention, which you guys were inspired by Tua when he had that hard hit and was out for several games. That's what inspired this. But not only that, but also wanting to know what they could do to support our science programs because they were so impressed with their work that they want to continue by supporting the school and increasing our science program.
Well now, does this show the degree of hit or the degree of pressure on the head when we have this type of injury?
It's both.
Shows both?
Oh.
Okay.
Wow, that's wonderful.
Their goal was that if you collected enough data and it was at different points that it would be hit, you could measure the data on the initial hit, but also if they hit the ground, how hard they hit the ground. And then to collect data from the senses so that they can correlate the concussions with the hardness of the tackle. Or they learned a lot about what happens when people get tackled to and how there's kicking and fighting and stuff going on. And just to measure all of that movement so that they could hopefully correlate when or how serious a hit is. And what was your scale on that hit?
From one to 10.
Yeah, so they had a one to 10 scale and that information would be sent right back to the coaches on the sidelines so that they could see.
So is this like a band that players will wear on their head?
No, so if it's for football players, the sensors will go inside the helmet where the like cushion's going to be too.
I can only imagine helmet manufacturers getting on board with this. Congratulations, ladies. I think that's wonderful.
What, I didn't catch, what grade are you all in?
Fifth grade.
Fifth grade. It's outstanding.
Well, that's great. That is great. Thank you very much.
We are so proud of them and we want to say thank you for what you do. And we want to say thank you for representing the best of MCS with us. And so we're going to give both of this tonight and of course to Dr. Mall as well for providing these opportunities for our students.
Congratulations, ladies. Somebody's going to make some money off that deal.
Those two girls right there.
I hope so. Yes, that's one, oh, I think that's...
Thank you, ladies.
I know who does.
What amazing things our students do, really. All right, spotlight on education, Dr. Duke?
Sir. Just a moment. Get resettled here. Over the past few board meetings, I have spoken at various times about our Born Learning Academy, which we hosted this year. As a reminder, this was a six-week partnership we had with the United Way. This program helped to provide our parents who have preschool-aged children valuable tools and resources to help them be the best first teacher their child will have. It was really a successful event. We are really proud of the work that we have done. And I'd like to invite our family and community engagement coordinator, Sharice McDaniel, to the podium to tell you a little more about the program. I will say, Sharice, as you heard the thank yous tonight, with all the season of sharing, with the food giveaways, with a lot of the activities that are set up to make sure our students are taken care of, that's Ms. McDaniel. She organizes that, she takes care of that. It's a very busy time of the year for her because she is helping making sure all of our students have a wonderful holiday season. So thank you for that, but she oversees all of our family engagement in that area. So Ms. McDaniel, in addition with Ms. Stacy Flora, a pre-K teacher at Black Fox, actually led this with Maricela Tapia, who are one of our liaisons as well. And I'd like for them just to take a moment or Sharice to take a moment to talk and update the board on the outcomes of this great program we had.
Good evening. Dr. Duke told us a lot, told you a lot about the program, but the whole series, it was a six-week workshop that began the week after fall break and ended right before Thanksgiving. But it was to give parents tools, everyday things that they could do to help engage their child and increase their development and learning. We also, we worked with United Way. This was completely funded through United Way and Ella Weaver was the person that we worked with with that. But every night, it was one night a week workshop, every night they came in, we fed them a meal and they ate together as a family. And then we separated the children and had volunteers from MTSU, College of Education Volunteers, Weekcare Daycare Center, and also Central Magnet came in to help with the childcare portion with those kids. And then their families went to learn with Stacy and Maricela, different topics every week, but they learned for about 20 to 30 minutes and we brought everybody back together and they practiced those skills with their children with the assistance of the facilitators there. So, and many times they made different things like sensory bottles, how to make healthy snacks, reading, they were singing songs, it was all kinds of things. And then at the end of the night, each child left with a book that was free to them and their parents left with other resources as well, little books to take with them, a grocery list, and then it had tips of what you could do while you're shopping in the grocery store with your children. So the workshop, just to let you know, the topics that we covered, the first one was series overview, building relationships which promotes social and emotional development, ready to read, so that was all about building language, nutrition and health, discussing healthcare, nutrition, and healthy sleep routines, how children learn, so that was a discussion about brain development, understanding your child's feelings and ages and stages, routines and learning on the go, which was a discussion using daily routines with your surroundings. We also invited community partners and also members of our district to come in to talk about what we offer. So that included like coordinated school health. We had thought the book bus come out, so they were able to experience that. The Discovery Center came and offered free passes. So it was really a great series. And with these workshops, we had families from every background there, every socioeconomic status from under 20,000 to over 80,000. It was just the joy to see them all come together. They created a community. The kids loved it and their families loved it as well. So I am going to share with you some quotes that were from the surveys, because we surveyed every parent every night to see their before and after knowledge. So one of them, "Really enjoyed the information and materials discussed. I enjoyed the group setting and talking with other parents. I find this program really helpful to make connections and learn more about developing my child. I hope they will have more." "These workshops are helpful. I'm able to hear other parents' ideas and struggles and know I'm not alone." "Teachers and staff are so friendly and welcoming. They did a great job." And the last one, "This workshop was very informative. I learned a lot and will be using the skills with my child daily." So overall, it was an amazing opportunity and we even have talks about doing another one in the spring in another one of our schools. So we're very excited about it.
Thank you, ma'am. Very good, very good.
And I'll add, and again, I'm so proud of what Sharice did with the help of the United Way and what she does all the time, because again, what her work is so important to our students' success. But with this program, I got to go a couple nights and I happened to be there the last night and the parents were talking and I had one parent talking about something with meal time, and I can't remember the exact situation, but something with meal time and strategy they had discussed. And she was talking about she did it with her child and her child telling her that she showed the other friends at lunch. So that was a great example of, it was very practical and it wasn't just go and hear theory, it was let's do this. And for our parents to say, "I did this the next day."
That's great.
And so a huge thank you to the United Way for funding this with us. And this is really coming out of the Women United branch of United Way and so we're really excited about seeing where this goes, so.
How many parents participated? How many families?
We had initially opened signups for 20 families and it quickly filled up. And so consistently, we had about 14 to 15 families come every week. And that included parents and grandparents. It was just a big, big event and it was very nice. And they came every week with a smile on their face, even when it was pouring down raining, they were still there to learn.
That is great.
Truly incredible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, do we have a motion to approve the consent items as printed on the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any question or comment? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right, action items. Board Policy 4.603.
Yes, sir. At the November 8th board meeting, the board approved amendments to Policy 4.603, which governs the district's promotion and retention of students. In doing so, the board requested that requirements pertaining to the third grade retention law be placed in a separate policy for clarity purposes and to also address any needed changes that may come through the General Assembly. This policy presented reflects the changes approved on first reading and removes language around the state's third grade retention requirements and we are recommending approval as presented.
Do we have a motion to approve the changes in Policy 4.603?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. We have a second.
Second.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Settles. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right, I guess we're looking for Policy 4.700.
I think, Mr. Chairman, we skipped, we need to do 4.6031.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, no, it's not all the same, is it?
So, excuse me, the new policy is 4.6031, is the promotion and retention policy specifically designed to address the requirements based on the TCAP results as currently stated in state law. And we are recommending approval of this policy as well.
Do we have a motion to approve Policy 4.6031?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Settles. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Now, any question or comment?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. This is that policy that deals with retention that helped me, Ms. Taylor, the State Department of Education or the Board of Education, somebody put together and said we had to do it.
The Tennessee General Assembly passed the law.
And they kind of got the, which board, is it the board or the department that's going to review the appeals?
The Tennessee Department of Education will review the appeals.
Right, thank you. I want to make sure that I'm getting, I thought it was legislative, but then I thought, well, maybe not. But the legislature...
They created the law.
They created this wonderful law about retaining students off of the test that are third grade students without, initially without input from the local school boards. And so in order to be in compliance with our wonderful legislatures, we had to pass, we had to write a policy, correct?
Yes.
We didn't develop this policy on our own because we thought this was a good idea to retain third grade students because of one day of testing.
This policy is presented so that the board has a policy that aligns with the law, an outward-facing document that aligns with the law, so parents are informed of the legal requirements.
All right, so that's the reason why we have this?
Yes.
I just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
Mr. Ballard?
So this policy that we have, we're about to vote on, was it drafted by TSBA?
Yes.
Okay, so we're basically just lifted out the verbiage from the previous document and drop in the verbiage from the TSBA third gr, or policy, I guess, covering this third grade retention.
Correct. As it was presented last week in one policy, all of that language came from TSBA's recommended model policy. And then based on the board's vote, we just carved out the portion related to the TCAP retention and put it in a separate policy, so it's a little bit more clear since there are two different appeal processes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Other questions?
So as we, as the General Assembly meets again and perhaps makes amendments to this, then we will have to go back to the drawing board and redraft, correct?
Yes, if there are amendments to the statute that would make this policy out of line with state law, then we would have to adjust our policy to correspond with state law.
And I think there has been quite a bit of discussion. So maybe it will, something.
And, Mr. Chairman, correct me if I'm wrong, this is also the policy we signed a resolution indicating our disfavor for. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. Along with several other school systems across the state of Tennessee. All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the policy as written. Now, do we need to vote? So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Nay.
Roll call vote, please, Ms. Van Cleve. Not trying to single out anybody, but I want to make sure that, oh, I caught her by surprise.
You can't be by surprise. I always pull that sheet out.
Do we have time for a chocolate then?
Yeah, I always get to go first.
Mr. Ballard?
Aye.
Ms. Dodd? Aye. Ms. Long? Aye. Ms. Moore? Aye. Mr. Richardson?
Abstain.
Mr. Settles?
Nay.
And Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
That is five yeses and one no and one abstain, so the motion passes.
Very well.
All right. We've gotten into this a little bit one time before, if I remember correctly, on TCAP tests in the second half. And we kind of got our hands slapped, didn't we? But that's okay. We're not by ourselves in this policy. All right, Policy 4.700, testing programs and...
Yes, sir. Policy 4.700 governs the district's testing programs. This amendment removes moot language regarding the weight of TCAP scores and grading and replaces it with new weights and identifies the methodology used. This amendment also addresses the assessment of students who transfer into Murfreesboro City Schools from a Category Four church-related school or a Category Five private school or a homeschool. We're happy to answer any questions you have on this policy and we are recommending approval.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the policy?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Let me get a motion first.
Okay.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Settles. Have a second, Ms. Moore? Now, question, Ms. Dodd?
So the 0% and the 10%, is that off of the cube root method or is that the raw score?
That is the cube root.
The cube root method is from the raw score, right.
That is something I may have to get our data assessment.
Or is that the raw score?
That is the cube root.
The cube root method is from the raw score. Right.
That is something I may have to get our data assessment.
I think I know.
Dr. George to get that.
Yeah.
He was very clear that he did recommend we use and have consistently used the cube root methodology.
I've used that before. I believe it's where you double the raw score and take the cube root of that. And then, that, it does bring it up a little bit. So, and 10%, I mean, that's fair.
And that is the minimal, that both of those numbers represent the minimum required.
I was going to ask that, too. Is this a state-required percentage, or did we come up with that 10%?
So, the state gives us a range, or the law gives a range, and we have elected to go with the lowest amount on both of those.
Okay. So, it looks like line 12 does say cube root methodology. Does that answer? Yes, it does. I don't know what it means. I can read the words.
I do know.
Double raw score.
I believe, I'm not sure if your question is at what point the cube root methodology is applied, but I can get Dr. George.
I was wanting to know, is it 10% of the cube root after you've already done the cube root? Or is it 10% of the raw score? That's really what I was asking. But it's the cube root.
But I will definitely get Dr. George to email you that response.
Ms. Moore?
So, since I don't know what any of that meant, do we need to, and since Karen does and still had a question about it, do we need to, whatever we find out from Dr. George, refine what we mean about when the cube root is used?
Well, I just know that the raw scores are much lower than your cube root. So, if we do 10%, I would want it to be 10% of the cube root.
And that is my, the state provides several options. You can use the cube root method being one of those, but.
Oh, would you explain the cube root to Mr. Richardson?
No, sir. I cannot. I cannot.
All right. The formula is where you take the raw score, you double it, and you take the cube root. And then, that gives the child a, more of a percentage score to go on their report card or whatever. So, that's what I was wondering. The raw score is always lower than the cube root score. The cube root score actually bumps it up a little bit. It's, you know.
So, it gives them more wiggle room?
Yes. The cube root one is going to be higher. So, I would want them to take 10% of the cube root and not 10% of the raw score.
And I do.
I think that's more fair.
And I do believe that is the intent. But I can, as I said, I may need to go back and investigate that with our assessment team.
So, you talk about cube root. We missed Clish here, because I'm still.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know what a cube root is.
Ms. Arnett is in the back.
Oh, it's, oh, Ms. Arnett. Roll on her.
You want to explain it to them?
I know it has something to do with math, therefore, I defer to the.
What would make you think that? What would make you think that?
Cube root?
It sounds like something I ate for dinner.
Is it not, is it math? It has something to do with math, right?
Yes.
Okay, I thought so. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, a point of clarification. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is on the first reading. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. This, my comment would be.
So, we have time to Google it.
Maybe. Depends on your device. I believe that it would be proper to go ahead with a vote on this and have some information relayed to us through a memorandum before the second reading.
Call for the question.
I'm okay with that. Yeah, that's fine.
All right. We have a motion and a second, and we've had discussion. Now, all in favor of adopting the policy, say aye.
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 Any opposition? And there is none. And it was a strong aye. All right. Approval of school calendar for 2023 and 2024.
Yes, sir. Tonight, we are presenting the proposed academic calendar for the 2023-2024 school year. This calendar meets all requirements from the Tennessee Department of Education. The first week of school for students, fall break, spring break, and the beginning of winter break, as well as the last day of school, all coincide with proposed dates for Rutherford County Schools as well. This calendar uses five stockpile days for professional learning. Eight stockpile days will be saved for inclement weather. This calendar was developed in conjunction with input from our teacher advisory council, as well as a parent feedback meeting was held. And to kind of really, I'd like to actually show a picture, if that's okay. If John can pull up, when we talk about the involvement of our teacher advisory council, just a couple pictures there, you can see the work. They really take this task very seriously. Ms. Sevesa, who also assists with the calendar, Ms. Arnett come, they work with our teacher advisory council. We talk about pros and cons. We set priorities. And they actually get to work and analyze and make suggestions and improvement. And it's that feedback that we use as we help draft that calendar. And so, what I actually like to do is ask Ms. Nicole Bell to come up. Ms. Nicole Bell is the sixth-grade teacher at Hobgood. She's also Hobgood's Teacher of the Year. She serves on the teacher advisory council. And I really would like for her to take a moment to kind of talk about her experience in the calendar development and where we kind of, some highlights from that. So, I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Bell.
Sure. Thank you. Good evening, board.
Good evening.
First, I would like to say what an amazing opportunity I was afforded to be part of the 2022-2023 Teacher Advisory Council. And this opportunity allowed me to discover and explore my teacher advocacy platform, collaborate with fellow educators about the most effective ways to continue to make MCS great, as well as be a voice for my colleagues in my school building. The MCS calendar is like waiting for sales to post for Black Friday. The hottest teacher topic is, please tell us, school starts as close to August as possible. And in addition, every parent wants to hear that city and county coordinated on the break schedules. This year, I went from waiting for the calendar to come out to having the opportunity to directly influence decisions that were made about it. This process has given me a new appreciation for the individuals charged with making these decisions each year. My takeaway here was that we were not just making a calendar, but facilitating a delicate balance between what's best for kids and other stakeholders. This year, there were three major areas that the TAC wanted to be sure and address. The first was the importance of repeating the week off for Thanksgiving break. Teachers that are watching are going, yeah. This allows for students, parents, and teachers to truly enjoy this time with their families. A large consensus of TAC members also agreed that coming back on July 31st would help compensate for a shorter-than-normal winter break. And finally, we agreed that the first parent-teacher conference needed to be moved to an earlier spot in the calendar. This would allow for teachers and parents to collaborate earlier to ensure student success. Overall, the experience of being on the TAC this year included many facets of the educational process that many of us had never experienced before. Serving on the TAC encouraged me to learn to use my voice for the advocacy, support, and evolution of the education profession. I am walking away with skills that will not only affect my everyday decisions in the classroom, but a clearer picture that I'm not just a teacher. I'm an empowered individual who can confidently use her voice and experiences to transform lives. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Don't go anywhere, Ms. Bell. We might have questions.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. It's stories like these that remind me that it's not just our students that are known safe, challenged, and empowered, but it's our educators, our administrators, nutrition, transportation. That we take that ethos seriously, and we implement it, and the results are right here. And so, thank you for that encouragement and that report. It's incredible.
Thank you.
I do have a question, and it may be for you, Dr. Duke, or for you, Ms. Bell, since you worked on the. The inclement weather days, there are eight, correct?
That's correct.
Then, do we use those if we have to have flu days?
Yes, sir. So, that would, anytime we're out of school for inclement weather or flu, it would use one of those eight stock, one of those eight stockpile days. So, and we have not historically, Ms. Trail worked very hard to hold as many of those stockpile days as she can in case of those emergencies. But I don't think we've ever hit eight. Is that correct? So, we felt really comfortable going with that eight number.
I just was wondering about that flu part.
Yes, and it would count for flu. So, if school's canceled for flu, it would come from that eight as well.
Gosh.
We worked really hard, obviously, not to do that. And again, this year, we came pretty close a couple times of looking at that. Continue to say kudos to our ESP team, who consistently steps up. And that is one of the reasons that we consistently can stay open when districts around us sometimes have to close because of numbers, is because we can pull on our ESP supports as well.
I'm so used to, for the last two years, seeing the nursing supervisor in all of our board meetings. And now, she doesn't have to come anymore. But I want, how bad have we been with the flu this year? Just wondering.
Our attendance has taken a hit. We, as we watch our chronic absenteeism numbers, we are seeing that those cases have gone up. I didn't have the exact number with me, but she just reported out, I think, over 4,000 clinic visits last month at a district. And she reminded us at our last department head meeting that Tennessee, for the last two weeks, has been number one in the nation for new flu cases.
I know. I've seen a few. And as far as teachers and support staff, have we?
We have made it. I may defer to Mr. Ringstaff or Ms. Johnson there. Around our sub-fill rate, we've been, I think, around the 60%. Is that correct, Ms. Johnson?
The first of November, first of March, now, we can get over now.
Okay. Thank you. Just wondering. Thank you, Ms. Bell.
Ms. Moore?
I had a question. I think, Ms. Bell, you're off the hook for this one. She's running while she can.
Ms. Moore, if I may interrupt to follow that last one. We had, last month, during the month of November, and with that short week, we had 4,181 visits to school nurses across the district. And the month before, to put that in perspective, we usually sit between 35, 3,700. Of course.
You said 4,000 visits?
4,181.
And we have, goodness, we got.
Ms. Moore?
Just one thing. Looking at the calendar, it looks like winter break goes later than usual. Is that right? It looks like we get kind of the first week of Jan, the full first week of January off. Where usually, I think, we're trying to come back right after New Year, so.
And Christmas break falls an unusual time this year, or next year. So, it falls a little later. And so, we looked at, you know, and had a conversation today. The goal was always to get three weekends in there.
Okay.
Get out, and we weren't able to do that this coming up year. To get out on a Friday, have the two weeks off, and then, you really have three weekends in between there. Because of the way that Christmas fell next year, if we had taken off that Friday beforehand, we would be getting out more than a week before when Christmas actually falls.
Mm-hmm.
So, because of the way it falls every few years, it kind of lends itself to we can only take two weekends. As Ms. Bell pointed out, one of the things we looked at is, instead of coming back August 1st, which is always a priority, that's on a Tuesday this year, what the teacher advisory council said is, let us come back on the 31st on that Monday, and then, give us that extra day over winter break. So, when you look at our calendar in comparison with Rutherford County, just for a comparison, their teachers return on the 1st, ours return on the 31st, our teachers. Our students still come back on the same day. We took that extra day and using some of our stockpile days to make Christmas break a little, one day longer than we had it beforehand, since it was already technically shorter because we lose a weekend there. I will say, when we had originally met with the TAC and we presented that option, we had put that extra day on the front end, getting out a day earlier. When we met, and that had our students coming back on the Friday of that week in January, which matches the county calendar. When we met with our parent group, our parents overwhelmingly said, can you move that extra day to the back? And I will say, that included a parent who had child in both systems. And that's one thing I pointed out. Like, if you have children in both systems, we always try and think about that. And the parent of the, that had children in both systems said, that's okay. We still want it on the back end. So, that pushes our return a little later. But at the end of the day, I'll tell all of our employees, 180 student days, five administrative days, five in-service days, and 10 vacation days every year is the consistent piece. It's the puzzle of putting it all together.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Now, do we have a motion to approve the calendar as printed?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Settles. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Approval of alternate compensation.
Yes, sir. During our November board meeting, we had a discussion around various options that school administrators have when they are faced with teachers being absent and a substitute teacher is not found to take that position. This includes assigning an educational assistant to the room or, in some cases, actually having to split students among other classrooms. Each method has its pros and cons, and both are used only when a substitute cannot be obtained. Tonight, we are proposing that in the event of an unfilled substitute position that results in a school principal needing to reassign students temporarily to another certified teacher's classroom, that the teacher who receives the students from that class would qualify for additional pay. That additional pay would be the average daily cost of a sub split between the receiving teachers. I do want to point out that if we, as we move forward with this, if the board approves it, that all staff are still required to continue to request substitutes for all absences through frontline. And this process is not designed and would not be used in lieu of requesting a substitute. School administrators may continue to use other staffing models, such as educational assistants, to cover classrooms as needed. This option is to ensure that our students continue to receive quality instruction when teacher is absent, and that a substitute teacher, and that a substitute teacher, if that is not available and the teacher, in result, has to take additional duties, is compensated for those additional duties as well. The memo in your board packet also outlines additional guidelines. If approved, we would want to start this in January for the start of the second semester. I'm happy to answer any questions you have regarding this at this time.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the alternate compensation?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Now, any question or comment? I see none. So, all in favor of the motion of the compensation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right. Approval of second semester signing retention bonus.
Yes, sir. We have, currently have two of our educational assistants, two openings for our educational assistance in our best, or otherwise known as our special education behavior classroom, with a third one anticipated in January. These EAs serve an integral role in our behavior program. And in an effort to recruit qualified EAs and retain these excellent employees, we propose the incentives listed in your memo below. This incentive would be applied not just to new employees that we're able to sign on to fill these needed positions, but also the current employees who are in those roles as well as a retention piece for the second semester. In the building as a whole that we're looking at, we have six educational assistants in the three classrooms that we're looking at, and three of those six are going to be open. So, this is really going to be a need for us as we move forward. I do also want to point out that this retention bonus for second semester mirrors what the classroom teacher in that position gets, because we give a stipend to the best teacher in that classroom, so it mirrors as well. And I think all of our best teachers would echo that that classroom is able to run and run smoothly because they have strong educational support in there as well. But we are recommending approval of this, so we can help staff this position moving forward for the next semester.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the signing retention bonus?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any question or comment? Mr. Richardson, then Ms. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Duke, does that come out of GP?
This would come out of a GP-funded account, yes.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Moore?
So, I support this fully. I guess my concern is, is money enough to keep these positions? And do we know why we've lost three? And is there something, another root cause that we could look at addressing beyond just money? The money is necessary, and it's good, and I support that. But I just, you know, people would have gotten this if they'd stayed. Possibly, they may not have known, but I don't think they're going to come back for this, so.
Absolutely. And so, I'll say, with these specific positions that we're losing, there are other pieces at play as well. I will say, and we know, it is, it's a difficult position and can be a difficult, and maybe a very demanding position, maybe a better way of putting that. So, our hope is just to attract. What we know is that we see applications for all of our positions at a very low rate. And so, our goal is to help look and say, okay, because this is a high-need position, is this something that would help attract those positions? I do think we will continue to look at that classroom. It's in that program. It's a conversation Ms. Fairchilden have often. And as we go into the budget process next year, it's something I want to continue to evaluate. This year, we've added some extra training. As the board knows, we've done the registered behavior technician training, trying to apply additional skills to that room as well.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Were no other questions? All in favor of the signing bonus, say aye.
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 Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Esser?
Yes, sir. The Tennessee Department of Education requires that local boards of education formally approve the Esser 2.0. approve the Esser 2.0 and 3.0 application each year, which outlines our use of COVID funding. These budgets and subsequent amendments have already been presented and approved through our standard budget and board meeting process. This approval is for our completed application, which has been presented to the State Department for their approval, which must be presented each year. I do want to stress, there have been no budgetary changes to these documents, no programmatic changes since the board last saw them. We are just presenting that now it is also state-approved, and so for our final board
Or do we have a motion to approve the Esser 2.0 and 3.0 application?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And I see none. Thank you. Zoning appeals special committee?
Board policy 6.205 requires Murfreesboro City Schools to have a zoning appeal special committee to hear zoning and placement appeals made by families. Applications for a hearing request must be made within 10 days after any assignment. Board policy specifies that at least one board member serve on this special committee. And as the board is aware through the committee assignments made at the beginning of the year, Mr. Ballard is our board member who serves on that committee. We are presenting to you tonight, the participants for the next fiscal year, who will, sorry, for the next calendar year, who will serve on our committee. This is the same committee from last year with no changes, and we are recommending approval.
Do we have a motion to approve the committee?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson, have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Any question or comment? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Ballard, for serving.
My pleasure.
Charter school review team?
Board policy 1.901 requires that we have a board-appointed review team in place in the event that any charter school applications are filed within the school district. The role of the charter school review team is to assist in reviewing and evaluating charter school applications, and formally recommending that the board either approve, reject, or reject with stipulations, or reconsider the application. Board policy 1.901 requires the charter school review team be composed of administrative staff from the district, community members, and a member of the board with relevant educational, organizational, financial, and legal experience. And Ms. Moore has been assigned to that board per Mr. Campbell at the committee assignments at the beginning of the year. We are recommending that the following participants, also outlined in your board memo, continue to serve on this team for the '23 calendar year. This is the same committee from last year, and we do approve this committee each year.
Have a motion to approve the charter school review team?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard, have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Settles. Any question or comment? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. And thank you, Ms. Moore, for serving. Hope we don't have to have it. Budget amendment?
Our first budget amendment tonight is the FY23 Title III Immigrant Grant, which is recognizing $7,568.91 in new revenue. The Title III Immigrant Grant for the '22-23 school year will be used to purchase additional Imagine Learning language and literacy licenses for our multilingual learners. The Imagine Learning Program is a computer program specifically designed for English-language learners that we have used with great success for several years, and this will allow us to buy some additional licenses for that. In addition, we are also asking the board to approve $2,217 in carryover funds from last year's grant, which will be used to help fund substitutes for English-language teachers as they attend professional development opportunities on serving our multilingual students.
Have a motion to approve the budget amendment?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right, approval of the GPS budget?
Yes, sir. The Community Foundation of Middle Tennessee awarded a grant to Murfreesboro City Schools in the amount of $9,500. The grant was selected from among 546 applications, and it recognizes the Community Foundation of Middle Tennessee's support of the work being done in our district. This amendment recognizes these new funds and the expenditures which will be used to provide materials for our Supports For Success Room at Kason Lane, which is designed to support the social-emotional needs of students, specifically around de-escalation, skill-building, and re-entry into the classroom. And if you remember, a few months ago, one of our best of MCS honorees was the teacher in that classroom, and so, which was a position that spun it through the United Way. So this additional grant will help provide her some additional resources and materials as well.
Do we have a motion to approve the budget amendment?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any questions? I see none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Budget amendments and school nutrition?
Yes, sir. The Tennessee Titans, along with the Dairy Alliance, excuse me, awarded $10,000 in grants to Murfreesboro City's Nutrition Department to support initiatives that promote healthy eating and physical activity. This grant will be used to fund two new, two new milk boxes and additional PE equipment at Black Fox Elementary. And I will say, when they came out to present Black Fox with the award, it was a whole lot of fun. The amendment also recognizes an additional $14,324 from the USDA Supply Chain Assistance Grants for a total allocation of $195,000. These funds must be used to purchase locally-produced food items. The original award of $181,000 was approved during the regular budget process. So the $14,000 is in new money for that grant. And I'm here, happy to answer your questions. I believe Ms. Shealy is here as well, if you have questions, and we are recommending approval.
We have a motion to approve the budget amendment?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Settles. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Now, we have any question or comment?
I have a question. Just a factual question. What's a milk box? Is that a cooler?
Ms. Shealy's, yes, that is a cooler.
Thanks.
I had a question, but it wasn't about, I knew it, a milk box, I guess. I guessed. Does it have the Titans on it? Is that what it looks like? It doesn't?
It does not.
Well, shame on them. No, really, my question was, how's the supply chain looking now? Are we still having difficulty getting?
Yes.
Is it as bad as it was, or any improvement?
It's improved.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Approval of school nutrition fund?
Yes, sir. We have one more, just budget transfer in school nutrition, and that's totaling $5,500 to increased communications by 3,000 and office supplies by 2,500 from the savings found in the Uniform Line item.
Do we have a motion to approve the school nutrition fund balance budget transfer?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, have a second.
Second.
Ms. Dodd, Ms. Long, both. Now, any question or comment? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Mr. Chair? If I may, while we're on the conversation of school nutrition, I do want to point out, if you are in any of our schools in the coming up, or the holidays or the new year, I really encourage you to go and check out our new cafeterias in many of our buildings that Ms. Shealy and her team have done the redesign work on. And I'm going to try and name them all, Ms. Shealy, so I don't want to forget them. She's working through them. So of course Salem was done when it was opened, Overall Creek was done when it was opened. Just recently, Bradley Elementary's cafeteria has been redesigned, Irma Siegel's has been redesigned, Black Fox's has been redesigned, Reeves Rogers has been redesigned, Northfield has been redesigned. Am I missing any?
Scales.
Scales has been redesigned. So she's working through, with, to work through some of these. Again, it's, if you haven't been, especially in some of the new ones, Bradley, Irma Siegel, I really encourage you, next time you're in those schools, to go check out those cafeterias. They have done an amazing job making those cafeterias just an excellent, just bright spot in the school. So I want to thank Ms. Shealy and her team for doing that work, and I just encourage you to go. It's a fun place to be in those buildings now. It always has been, but now it's specifically fun.
Let's see, we need approval for the nutrition fund budget transfer?
I think we just, I think we just did that.
We did that.
We did that. We voted on it. Thank you very much. All right, reports and information. Directors update?
Yes, sir. I have a couple updates tonight as we wrap up our meeting, just to provide the board with some information that I'd like to point out. First, and I sent this through email, but I want to publicly bring it up, but on February 9th, we're having a visit from some people from across the country. So a few weeks ago, we received a call from the Tennessee Department of Education. And in February, the State Department will be hosting an event that will bring together 40 commissioners and assistant commissioners of education from 14 states across the country, who are part of the Council of Chief State School Officers. As part of their conference, they had asked the Tennessee Department of Education to identify a district they could come and visit who are working with high-quality instructional curriculum materials, in the area of reading specifically. The state identified and asked MCS if we could be the district they visit. And of course, we're really proud of this for several reasons. One, because it shows the hard work that Ms. Arnett's team is doing, and the movement we're making toward using high-quality instructional materials in every classroom. And as you know, just a few months ago, we also hosted the Knowledge Matters Tour for the same concept and for the same reason. So this is really a great honor, again, underscores the work we're doing in literacy with our adopted instructional materials. We're in the planning stages now, but I did want to bring up this exciting news, as you hear more. But to be selected by the state is really, like I said, just kudos to Ms. Arnett's team because they work really great and really hard to make sure that our teachers know how to use the materials that the board provides, that they can use them well, and that we're seeing a real difference with students. And so, wanted to bring that up to your attention. I also wanted to, I'm sorry.
No, I won't.
I apologize. I'm happy to answer any questions on that, or you know me, I'll keep rolling, so.
Roll on.
Okay. I've also attached in the director's update, the board meeting calendar that we looked at the beginning of the year, and I did make one change, or suggesting one change to that board meeting calendar. On January 10th is our second semester work session that we will have at the central office that we have, we had last year as well. That meeting runs from 5:00 to 8:00, and is really a chance for us to update the board on some projects we're working on, some upcoming things that are coming, and then also help lay the foundation for board budget work sessions that'll come a few months later. What we've added to that calendar is, from 5:00 to 5:30, we're actually tagging that as a regular board meeting session, because we are anticipating we'll have a few things we need to vote on. So the time is still the same, the location is still the same, but as we did in August, we will actually have a mini-board meeting first, before we go into our workshop, to allow us to vote on some items. So I wanted to flag that for the board as well. Final updates, believe it or not, winter break begins next week. So Friday is our last day of school. Students do return on January 4th this year, and so we're looking forward to a great break, but we have a few more days, and then we're going to send everyone home for the rest of the year, calendar year.
Good deal. Anything else come before the board? I would like to say, and I've gotten the, okay, from the board being that we don't